You don't owe an easy committee.
Here. Me?
Yeah. Oh.
I know, we're getting ready to get started, so if we can take it down a notch.
I thought, right. I read this.
We have a lot of things on our agenda tonight, so we've, we are excited to get started. Tonight is the Middleton Common Council. It is December 19th here in City Hall. I'm calling to order the council meeting with a roll call, please.
Thank you. Alder Schaefer.
Here.
Alder Wokes.
Here.
Alder Cole.
Here.
Mayor Kuhn.
Yes.
Alder Nelson. Alder Jackson is absent, but is on his way. Alder Henairo.
Here.
Alder Lorman.
Here.
Alder Crowe.
Here.
They're all there.
First up, I would like to call former Alder Jim Wexler to the podium to read the proclamation honoring City Attorney Larry Beckler's service to the community upon his retirement.
Well, it's great to be here tonight. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, still feel after a few years, I really should be sitting up there, you know? As some of you may know, I was on the common council from 1988 to 2015. And what few of you may know is that Larry Beckler and I go back far longer than that. We actually went to high school together at Sherwood High School just north of Milwaukee, and Larry graduated a year ahead of me.
Go Greyhounds.
That's what, yep. My next yes. We are very proud Greyhounds here tonight. And I just have to say before I read the proclamation that one of the best things that we did during my service on the council was hiring this guy as city attorney. We never regretted it. We were always happy with our decision. So this is a great evening for Larry. All right, I'd like to read the proclamation honoring City Attorney Larry Beckler's service to the city of Middleton. Whereas Larry Beckler has served the city with great distinction as city attorney from 2000 to 2023 through his work with Murphy Desmond S.C. Previously, Larry has served as assistant city attorney through another firm from 1978 until the 1990s. And whereas Larry's wisdom has been evident in the twice monthly common council meetings as he has advised the city's elected officials through five different mayors during his city attorney tenure. From parliamentary procedure to his recitation of statutes by precise enumeration to his vast knowledge of local government law, he has enabled the city to flourish with the best of legal advice. And, and this is the long one. Throughout his tenure, Larry advised on all major issues facing the city including tax increment financing agreements, intergovernmental relations with the state, school district and other local governments, ordinance development, including the zoning code, specialty agreements such as those which framed the development of the Capital Ice Arena and the Erdman Cross Country Ski Park, the purchase of properties for the Pheasant Branch Conservancy, and the purchase and development of the Middleton Municipal Airport. Ah, and whereas Larry and his firm have generously supported various Middleton causes such as the Good Neighbor Fest, Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, performing arts activities, and Larry's own essential participation. This one is dear to my heart. For the past 10-plus years, as a member of the two-time state champion local trivia team, the brains that wouldn't die. We're happy to have many of them here tonight. Yes, yes. And finally, whereas a few know that Larry also, a few that know Larry also know that he is a modern-day Renaissance man who not only has been named a top lawyer statewide and nationally, but who is also an accomplished musician, having marched in the Ohio State Marching Band as an undergraduate. His background in anthropology has given him a fervent and active mind and interests in history, archaeology, architecture, sports, and in the performing arts. He is truly a man for all seasons. Now therefore, the common council of the city of Middleton and Mayor Kiun hereby thank and recognize Larry Beckler for his dedicated and exceptional service to the city of Middleton and wish him the absolute best on his well-deserved retirement. Thank you, Larry.
He's clapping, Henairo.
I don't know.
Mayor and council members, it's great to be back and especially to honor Larry Beckler, Mike Davis, city administrator for 23, 24 years. But Larry has surpassed me with 25 years of service to the city, and I wanted to note that for the record as well. Larry truly was dedicated and fervent in his desire to make Middleton a better place to live. And he has so well-served the community, and we wanted to get a few folks together. We're all going to go out for a drink, Larry. I don't know that you can leave this meeting, but we're going to be over at the Village Green celebrating you. Thanks.
Very kind. Before we take a picture with Larry, is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
Yes, I move that we approve. Wonderful proclamation.
Is there a second?
Schaefer seconds.
Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the proclamation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
Were you good choosler? Eating.
He happens. I like that. Moving on to public comments, and I do want to say thank you to everyone that came to say goodbye to Larry, and it looks like they are all leaving to celebrate.
It's, it looks like a short. Blood ridden.
Yes, okay. Very good. Now getting back to the business of the city. Enjoy your time, everyone. Up first is Sharon Smith. Is she in the audience? Oh, hi. It says that you would like to talk about the current access to kayaks. Oh, did not to speak. I apologize. Uh, okay, so Sharon Smith, and I will give the paperwork over for address, does not wish to speak, so thank you for the correction. Notes her concern about current access to the kayak canoe launch from Century Harbor condo property and noting native plantings. My new favorite topic, in case you all don't know, potholes have been fixed, so native. I'll stop that. All right, next is Pat Fraber. Is Pat in the audience? Okay, and the top topic is Blue Map.
What?
Blue Map.
Name and address, and you have about three minutes.
Yep. Pat Fraber, 6206 Lakeview Boulevard, and this is regarding the rezoning of 2159 Allen Boulevard. My husband and I have lived in our home since 1988. We raised our family in this home. We love the neighborhood, our neighbors, and our home. This was supposed to be our forever home. If this new zoning passes allowing a five-to-seven-story apartment building to be built, I and at least four other residents on Lakeview and one on Middleton Avenue, or Mendota Avenue, sorry, would seriously consider selling our homes. I don't say this lightly. All of us have updated our homes. We had all planned to stay, if not for the rest of our lives, at least 10 to 20 more years. It makes me angry and really saddens me that this is what we feel we have to do. You have heard from so many residents who are against this. You've also heard from members of your council who have had reservations. Even with all this, you continue to forge ahead with what seems like no regard for the concerns presented to you. The reasons stated for developing all the corridors coming into Middleton are transit use and affordable housing. I don't believe either of these would be addressed with the building that would be built on this property. Any new apartments built on Allen Boulevard due to its close proximity to the lake would not address the need for affordable housing. I sent an email proposing a park-and-ride, a parking place that is designated for people to park and take transit. Everyone in Middleton, not just the apartment building, would have an easier access to the bus line. I believe this would be a good start for a solution to encourage more transit use. In July of this year, the vacancy rate of existing Middleton apartments was 4%, less than the 5% considered ideal. However, when factoring in anticipated population growth and the number of new and soon-to-be-completed apartments in Middleton, which is 1,800 units, this far exceeds the 48 units needed to reach 5% vacancy. Lake 61 Luxury Apartments, who I just reached out to today, has 40% vacancy. They have 65 apartments with 26 still remaining to be rented. They also have Lake Views. This should really make you stop and think. Is this the best use for 2159 Allen Boulevard? When less than a half a mile down the road, a development much smaller than what could be proposed on 2159 Allen Boulevard has a 40% vacancy. Over 90% of the people I've talked to are not in favor of this zoning or having a massive apartment built on this property. Many people have passionately stood before you or emailed you reasons why they don't believe mixed avenue use is appropriate zoning for this.
Your time is up, Neil.
Okay. Can I just say, I want to thank everyone on the council who've tried very hard to come to a compromise, and I want you to know that you guys are appreciated.
Thank you. Up next is Tom Carmen, and the topic is Lake Street redesign. Please state your name and your address.
Tom Carmen, 2623 Middleton Beach Road. Good evening. My name is Tom Carmen, reside at 2623 Middleton Beach Road and own 6053 Lake Street. I want to express strong continued support to rebuild Lake Street and to install the new park area for hand-launching of boats and added green space. However, I do have several concerns about the rebuild. The current street design will extend the street and sidewalk footprint beyond the current street footprint. As a result, the Century condominium property will likely lose all boundary shovary and their springs potentially impacted. On the south side of the street, there's question whether the trees along Harbor Athletic Club would be impacted. It is clear, however, that the trees in the Middleton Beach Road cul-de-sac would be lost, and I would have to at least delim or lose all the mature trees on the edge of my property. These trees and shrubs are necessary for privacy. For 6053 Lake Street, not all vehicles may fit in the, in the drive. When working through the numbers, it seems to me that we can avoid this impact altogether by simply applying standard street width and by moving the sidewalks in towards the curb. This would result in a wider green space beyond the sidewalk where existing trees could remain and native plantings and soil could potentially be added. In fact, we could potentially add green space. For example, from the curve on Lake Street and eastward, the existing street footprint is approximately 56 feet. Applying the standard residential street width of 32 feet and a three-foot terrace and a five-foot sidewalk on both sides would result in approximately 48 feet. This is clearly less than 56 feet of the existing footprint. I asked the council to provide guidance that the street and sidewalks should fit within the existing street footprint as a first approach to the design. Further options should be explored to maximize the resulting green space to the north and south edge of the sidewalks where native plantings and soil could be incorporated. I also ask for street width to not exceed the standard residential street width for at least the east end of the street. I recognize that the west, west end of the street is more business-oriented with an existing 36-foot street width. However, a narrower street throughout will calm traffic and provide more green space. For the cul-de-sac area, I would like to relay that it's critical to maintain an area for vehicles offloading for park use while still maintaining an area for turnaround. I ask the staff to look closely at this issue and as to whether additional area for cul-de-sac might be prudent. Park hours. I ask the common council to support actions for the Parks Committee to apply park ordinances and hours to the proposed area. Late-night activity has been one of the struggles for neighbors, and implementing hours will aid safety and police and the police department in their work. Lastly, I ask the council to recognize that this rebuild is a melding of park use, residential neighbors, commercial business, and desired green space and stormwater management. We need to be careful in applying typical street and park designs in a default manner in this case. Design flexibility is crucial in producing the best long-term design for all. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Up next is Michael Lycera, Lycery, Lycary, thank you. Wishes to speak on short-term rental ordinances. Can you say again your name and your address, please?
Michael Lycary, 701 Quiet Pond Drive. As a current short-term rental operator in Madison, Verona, and Middleton, I'm in support of some of the new proposed short-term rental ordinances, but against others. I've sent my detailed comments to the committee ahead of time for review. In summary, Middleton only has about 10 entire home listings on the short-term rental platforms and realistically closer to five. The other handful of listings are for 30 days or longer, which cannot be regulated by local ordinances. Restricting stays of less than seven days to primary residences only panders to the hotel industry in town and doesn't allow small business owners like myself to participate in what should be a free market. This market is not a major metropolitan area, and outside investors are not going to flood the market because it isn't profitable enough. To limit this fear, instead, I ask the city consider a distance requirement where you must live within 25 miles of the property you own or manage. This makes sure that the owner operators are locals within the county. Most people are not going to rent their primary homes on a short-term basis, so you are essentially saying no to short-term rentals less than seven days. And I know when I travel with my family somewhere, we aren't staying for seven-plus nights, but rather two to three nights. We enjoy staying in Airbnbs because we can get an entire home with privacy, a yard, kitchen, et cetera. And guests coming to visit Middleton and the surrounding area are looking for the same type of accommodations. These guests generate tax dollars in the form of lodging tax for the city and also generate income for the local businesses, for local business owners. The language around a max rental period of 180 days is an arbitrary number that also needs to be eliminated. Once a property is being utilized in a renter, in a rental, what's going to happen those other 180 days? Nothing really changes except lost revenue for the property owner or manager. The vast majority of short-term renters are respectable individuals not looking to disrupt the community. But with the new application and licensing, you're able to revoke the license of those disruptive owner-operators while those like myself are allowed to operate. These blanket changes are damaging to the community and don't allow for free market competition. As a local investor, I'm not looking to buy up every home, but would like the opportunity to operate an unrestricted short-term rental as long as it abides by the same ordinances all the other residents of the community abide by, but not by a separate standard rules. We should be welcoming guests into our community, not shunning them away to the hotels. And as the ordinances are currently written, we will only be eliminating the small amount of operators with little to no prospect for future short-term rental operators in Middleton. Thank you.
Next is Elizabeth Misco. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Elizabeth Misco, 5601 Sagmeno Road. I'm here because I am a municipal parking aficionado, and I'm very interested in this tapping, topic after watching my father try to develop an office building in La Crosse into low-income housing, and he failed four different attempts because he could never solve his his off-street minimum parking requirements with that development. So that property has now moved on to a different use. It wasn't fully developed to its optimal use, in my opinion. So this is a topic that's been dear to me over the last several years, watching him struggle with this. So when this book, Paved Paradise, came out, I was really eager to read it. And now that I've finished it, I want to give two copies to all of you to read because I think it's really important to think about how off-street parking minimums in particular prevent two things from happening in a lot of cities. One is it, the requirement prevents a lot of small infill developments because the land is, you know, only of a certain size, and once you develop parking, you, there's no room to develop, you know, a small, maybe four-unit development as well. And the other thing is that it actually makes development more expensive because the price of parking is wrapped into the development, and then housing becomes more expensive. So especially in this housing market, when we're looking to develop more low-income housing, I think that it's worth everybody's time to read this book, and so I'm leaving two copies, I guess, on this table for you all to fight over. Thank you.
Thank you. Very kind. Is there any comments on Zoom or anyone else?
Just for anybody that's on Zoom, does anybody wish to speak at the public hearing? Going once. Going twice. Okay, seeing no, no hands raised virtually.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda as recommended to council by committee-commission board, including the approval of the December 5th Common Council minutes audit of the bills to be paid as recommended by Finance Committee and approval of the 2024 City of Middleton Staff Compensation Plan. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval, and I would like to note that the audit of the bills includes two items, $29.50 for the registration, $219.50 for the registration fee trust, and $9,245 for E and E construction and remodeling.
Is there a second?
Forman, second.
Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Resolution. The first topic is Resolution 202357, changing the polling place for District 7 and 8 to the District Service Center, moving from the Lakeview Park Shelter. Is there a motion?
Forman will make motion that we change the polling place for District 7 and 8 to District Service Center from Lakeview Park Shelter.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any comments?
I guess I do have a question as to the, the reason why moving it to a further distance. I know we voted, I know District 8 has voted there in the past.
Yeah, I think the challenge has been with Lakeview, if the weather, if we have inclement weather, there's no place to hold or queue people inside the structure in a way that's safe and efficient. So we were looking at other places that had space available that could accommodate us. The District Service Center, I think, works from a number of different perspectives. From an ADA perspective, first and foremost, it's kind of zero-grade entry in from their kind of side entrance in the parking lot right basically into the hallway and then the larger room, which is their professional development room, which could serve as the polling place, and there'd be sufficient area to set up the queue lines in there, and it's adjacent to bathrooms and all those things. So, you know, again, this is something we can continue to revisit over time, but just knowing that the commentary that we've received on the Lakeview, we wanted to look for another option that would be available.
Alder Schaefer.
Yeah, I got, I got similar concern. I heard from at least one constituent that this is far from their voting places. And I'm, is this looking as a sort of a semi-permanent move? Or is there still an ongoing look to find something closer to where those districts are?
I mean, to be honest, there isn't really anything closer to where those districts are. Everything else is a private place of employment that would be hesitant to give up that space, you know, during business hours that you'd need for at least four elections over the course of 2024. This is a five-year agreement, but it doesn't mean that we can't revisit it after the 2024 election if another suitable solution is available, but there really isn't anything in that geographic area that would be available publicly.
Alder Nelson and then Alder Wokes. Are there some districts and wards that already vote there?
No, this was previously a polling place for the city. It was previous to my time here, so I'm not sure exactly what wards had voted there, but I think about five years ago or so, it had served as a polling place.
My question was going to be, why not shift a little bit more, but then you're sending out, you're shifting a lot of different districts instead of just two, so I understand why. It is just unfortunately to move them the farthest, but I understand that.
Yeah, just so you all know that I received a briefing from the city clerk, and she did an excellent job raising a lot of these concerns. She hears it herself. One of the things we talked about is as the city grows, we may want to even add in polling plate. That has nothing to do with tonight, but just so you understand. So this will be something that the city administrator and I will continue to talk about. We will continue to talk to you all about because we would like it to be closer to the neighborhood.
Please do.
So I will carry that burden. Alder.
And I will say, I have voted at the, at the district center in the past from, you know, living in the same District 8, so I know that we've done that in the past. I know that the problems we've had at Lakeview Park, I know that when there are long lines, you're outside. The days that I remember, the weather was nice, but I was thinking, what happens if it's raining? What happens if it's cold? So I understand kind of the need to move that, especially, and, and also the, the walking distance from the parking lot to the, to the shelter for some people was tough. So I, well, I don't like moving that far away and people basically having to drive to get there. I think until we find a better place close by, this is probably our best bet.
And I do want to say thank you to the school district for working collaboratively with us and helping this move forward. It's going to be a lot of voting in '24, so glad they're offering their location. With that, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing Resolution 202357, changing the polling place for District 7 and 8 to the District Service Center. And we're pointing out Alder Nelson shared it with 7106 South Avenue, just for the record. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and thank you for pointing out that address, Alder.
Motion passes unanimously, and thank you for pointing out that address, Alder Nelson. Number two, resolution 2023-59, approving a tax increment financing bond for 3810 Parmenter LLC.
This is Honiro. I move approval as recommended by the finance committee.
Forman, second.
Any comments or suggestions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving resolution 2023-59, approving TIP bond for 3810 Parmenter, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to agreements. The first is change order number three with Badger Land excavating for North Mendota Trail East segment in an amount not to exceed $42,778.16.
This is Honiro. I move approval of change order three as recommended by the Ped Bike and Transit Committee and the Finance Committee.
Forman, second.
Any comments or suggestions? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the change order number three with Badger Land excavating, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number two, amendment number one to grant agreement with Dane County regarding North Mendota Trail project.
This is Honiro. I move approval as recommended by the finance committee.
Forman, second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving amendment number one to grant agreement with Dane County, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number three, assignment of hangar lease from Badger Flying Service LLC to TRP Aviation Management LLC.
I'd like to make a motion for the assignment of hangar land lease from Badger Flying Services LLC to PRP Aviation Management LLC.
Is there a second?
Schaefer, second.
Any comments? All those in favor of approving assignment of hangar lease from Badger Flying Service to TRP Aviation Management, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to number four, memorandum of understanding with Middleton Cross Plains Area School District regarding use of District Service Center as a City of Middleton polling location.
This is Rokus. I'll move approval of the memorandum of understanding.
Schaefer, second.
There any comments?
Subject to approval of the city attorney, there are still two minor changes that need to be made. It doesn't affect the substance, but they do need to be made.
Okay, subject to city attorney approval. Any other comments? Is that, oh, is that addition? Okay, okay, great, thanks. All those in favor of approving the memorandum of understanding with Milton Cross Plains Area School District regarding use of District Service Center as a City of Middleton polling location, subject to city attorney approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to award of bid quote in professional services. Number one, recommendation for award of bid for 23115 Senior Center Furnace AC Controls. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion recommending award bid for the 23115 Senior Center Furnace AC and Controls.
Is there a second?
Rokus, I'll second.
Any comments? Hearing none, all those in, I'm sorry.
I do have a question about this with regard to our city civic campus committee and how replacements and repairs will look going forward, right? Like, once replaced and repaired, can't be moved into potentially new building space. So just wondering where the timing of that falls.
Yeah, I mean, there are going to be some facilities repairs that we absolutely have to make in order to keep our buildings operable until that decision is made. To the extent that we can salvage or, you know, if we were to decide to, for example, reconstruct a building or build new, we would recycle as much of that material as possible. To the extent we can reuse it in a new facility, you know, we'll do that. So that's kind of front of mind for all these decisions that we are making, you know, in the near term until that decision is made.
I appreciate that question, efficiency and effectiveness of resources is always important. And I do know that we have green technology interest on, on the council as well as the city as a whole. So I appreciate everyone's comments in the past. And with that, all those in favor of approving the recommendation for award of bid for 23115, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to one. Miscellaneous, number one, discussion and potential action on the second reading of an ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan of the City of Middleton, Wisconsin. Comprehensive Plan Amendment Two, including future land use map changes.
I will kick this off. All of you know that we had a rather unusual situation occurred with the prior second reading of this ordinance in that despite my many years of experience, having never run into the effect of a 303 vote before, I, I was required to research what it meant. And as a result of my research, it was my opinion that the action taken at that meeting, which was to reject the vote on the basis of the lack of a, of a quorum voting in favor of it, was erroneous. So this, this matter was not on the agenda on December 5th. So the question became, what, what do we do at this point in time? And I would be the first to admit that I have done extensive research. I have learned that not all states hold to the same rules of how they would apply parliamentary procedure to this kind of situation. But I'm convinced that Wisconsin would direct that had that action been formally approved at that meeting, emphasis at that meeting, it would have been valid. But it wasn't approved at the meeting. And there is a significant difference between how Robert's Rules of Order differentiates between abstention as a member's present requirement for purposes of quorum and as a majority vote requirement. And I have discovered there are over 1,000 cases on this point from all over the country. I have not read even 10 of them, but it's enough to tell me that there is some significant concern. So the final point I want to say about this is this is an ordinance. This is the most significant act that the council ever takes, other than adopting a charter ordinance. And thus, in, in my opinion, given the, again, no blame being assigned because it was such an unusual situation. But given the action that was taken at the last meeting back on November 21st, I think the best option for the council is to simply vote again. I, I would be the first to recognize that I am not doing this on the basis of Robert's Rule says thou shalt have another meeting when there's confusion. Robert's Rule is silent on this, and that those are the procedural rules that govern council action. But I do want to say one more thing about that. I've offered a legal opinion. The council is free to take or reject my legal opinion at any time. That's all it is. And so if the council would choose to say, well, the prior vote was effective, and you take that action at this meeting tonight, that's, that, that's no problem to me because it is your vote and not my opinion that counts here. And
I'm gonna, I, I hold the floor. Thank you for that.
Okay.
And I appreciate that. I, I am understanding of your opinion. And I want to remind everyone that on November 7th, council approved the first reading of the ordinance with overwhelming support of seven to one. On November 21st, with two alders absent, the second reading resulted in a vote of three in favor and three abstaining. The city administrator reported in the minute state motion fails due to lack of majority of quorum. As you noted, that was erroneous. The minutes from November 21st also state that the council asked city attorney Beckler to review and provide an opinion on what the prevailing side of the vote was under Robert's Rules of Order. We amended the minutes on December 5th to add a second part to our request to the city attorney, namely to also determine whether the 303 vote meant the comp plan ordinance had been adopted. By letter to city administrator Gatto on November 30th, attorney Beckler provided his opinion that the vote on the ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan was adopted by the common council with a vote of three to zero, with the abstaining votes not counting in any way. The reason that I want to have this discussion today is that we're mindful of the need for openness and transparency regarding our decisions as a body. Comp plan amendment for the public, the staff, and ourselves needs to have closure. If the vote on this ordinance had been three to zero, that would give me pause. But we had a first vote with overwhelming support of seven to one. We have a legal opinion from our city attorney that abstentions do not count as votes. And so the ordinance to amend the comprehensive plan was adopted. As your mayor and as a presiding officer in this council, my decision is that on November 21st, council approved the second and final reading of the ordinance adopting amendment two of the comprehensive plan by a vote of three to zero with three members abstaining. Amendment two of the comprehensive plan is adopted. Moving on, ordinance's first reading. Ordinance to create chapter 35 of Middleton Municipal Code.
Madam Chair, is there urgency with this item? Do we know, Mark?
The urgency is simply that chapter 35 and the repeal of section 10.96 needs to take place before any action on the zoning ordinance rewrite.
But you don't need it approved tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you. Then, Madam Chair, I'll move approval of the ordinance to create chapter 35 of the Middleton Municipal Code Extraterritorial Zoning Ordinance.
Is there a second?
This is Alder Crowe, I'll second.
Any comments?
Just one question. I believe that the ordinance was corrected to change the repealed sections from 10.98 to 10.96.
Correct. Yes, that was an error.
I mean, the packet has the wrong number in it.
We updated the packet this morning when we discovered the error.
Okay, thank you.
And I, I presume the question about urgency has to do with whether it's first or second reading. Yeah, first reading is perfectly fine.
Thanks.
All those in favor of approving the ordinance to create chapter 35, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to recommendations, proposals. Number one, preliminary design options for Lake Street and Dewey Court reconstruction. My apologies, I have some notes. All right. With this, I'm going to ask Sean and Kylie to come to the front and provide a little overview as this is a unique proposal, or at least unique in my experience. And that way we can talk through the design layout and the lake edge, as we're calling it, overlook?
Yeah, we had called it a park et at one point, but Lake Edge sounds better.
I'm working on my language, yeah.
What's that?
Dead end.
See, Dead End sounds so bad, distant third. Right? So it, you know, this really, I think, started in, in big part as a road project because there's really old water main that just continually breaks. So that became a pretty pressing road project in, in, on my desk. From Kylie's perspective, this is part of an overall area park planning effort. So the two dovetailed to some degree, you know. And so you'll all recall, of course, that the council previously gave direction to staff then and said, okay, yeah, let's redesign the road and let's include this lake edge part of the road in a different sort of way, land use-wise than we had. And Kylie had laid out 18 different criteria that were compiled from various committees, which then the council adopted as guidance to staff. So, so from there, I kind of picked it up and began road design with some features of park design at the end. And the road design is pretty straightforward, I would say. You know, again, this is really about replacing some water main, but we're looking at adding sidewalk wherever we can to connect people with places. The one caveat is we're, we still want to look pretty carefully at the sidewalk along the Harbor Athletic Club parking lot because that was one of those 18 criterion that if, if the tree's viability is going to be jeopardized by that sidewalk, let's favor the trees and not the sidewalk. Apart from that, we're rebuilding a road. So MSA came up with a couple of concepts for the Lake Edge, which I think is probably the most interesting part of this project. And I would characterize it as option one. Well, the two options have sort of different overview seating areas up top, but then the ramps down to where the pier intersects, you know, the shoreline is probably what's most different between the two options.
Just hold a moment. I think he's trying to show us right now. For those of us who haven't had a few minutes to look at it or are just catching up. And, and so the one thing I'm really excited about is the added green space, the native plants. We still have the pier and the fire chief is happy that it's going out a little bit more because lake levels is sometimes hard to get in. So that's good. And it will be a kayak canoe launch, which was a lot of the vision. So it's very exciting.
Yeah. So we, you know, part of what's not on these drawings yet is that we've been looking more into riparian rights. So this pier may need to angle a bit, like you see other piers along that same stretch of shoreline. But where it intersects the shore itself still has some favorable maneuverability from option one versus option two, less turning, less distance. You know, so it's a little bit more of a straight shot. We did talk at Public Works last month, Public Works Committee last Monday, and then at the park board yesterday evening about trying to eliminate some of that southerly sidewalk at sort of the viewing area up top. You see where the two trees are in that island? If you go just south of there, talking about trying to eliminate some of that sidewalk to allow even more green space. But other than that, I don't know that there was a lot of input other. You have Public Works notes, Public Works Committee notes in your packets. And do you want to hit some highlights, maybe Kylie?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, there was some media coverage on the cost of the whole project. So I want to point out, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but it's the water main that's causing the, the higher cost on the roadside.
Well, I think the biggest part of it is we usually like to do design a year ahead so that we can get a reasonable cost estimate into the budget process. We didn't have that available to us here, so we took a guess. We guessed wrong, as all estimates are, but this was wildly wrong.
That's an issue that doesn't, it's not disputed between item one and two. It's the same.
it's not disputed between item one and two. It's the same.
Yes, I'm sorry. My apologies.
That's exactly right. You know, so, so I think the, of the different buckets of funding, I would say that the general capital borrowing is most in need, is most efficient, right? The water utility is okay, a little bit thin. Sewer utility is fine. You know, so we'll have to figure out a little bit more of this and come up with a different funding. I laid a couple out in the Public Works Committee Minutes as options.
Alder. Hennara? Thank you. I just wanted to mention also at the Public Works Committee, we talked about, can you go back to the previous one, Brian? So some folks, I think the staff prefers this option, but we all agreed that the self-serve kayak rental is not something we would do. And we did talk about maybe eliminating those stairs. And as Sean mentioned, building in more green space everywhere. And regarding the cost, I just want to note that it isn't just this road. It's also Dewey Court that's rolled into this project. So that's.
Thank you for that reminder. That's a really good point.
Yeah, so for the most part, we went to the Public Works Committee and the Park Board for design input at this stage because we're on just a really aggressive timeline trying to get this final design completed and out to bid as soon as possible, really.
Thank you for that. I know that one of the things I read is that you were looking for, I think, direction to keep going, at least for the roads. Pretty happy with that. And just as long as we can try to keep some of that green space, keep chucking. Kylie, I think you're going to go over, at least maybe talk to us about one and two. And I kind of have the understanding that most people like one, adding in that green space. I can tell you that like number two is where the pier is. So the pier is just something I'm keeping an eye on because it currently is on that south side. So having it on the north side is a change for all the neighbors. So I'm open to ideas, but trying to keep, because there is a lot of change, trying to.
There's, so option one is staff prefer, PRFC had voted or in support of option one at their meeting last night. The pier, there are that, the kind of the shadow areas, there are, there currently is a pier where that the new pier is. So if you see that shadow in the back, that's actually current. And it's longer. And then there, the fire boat is in that southern shadow area. So we're looking at adding a pier and that length is important for storage for where number four is located. We're looking at storing it there. So being smart about the length of pier and making sure it can fit for storage there and not on the street currently where it's at. And then we, like Sean said, where we would like to, our PRFC had discussed in the riparian rights, so just making sure we're staying within that. So if it does need to move a little south or and/or be angled, we will be looking at that to stay within the riparian rights. The reason why we do see a benefit to have that pier on the northern, northern end of that shoreline is just it's in the name overlook. If people do visit the lake edge and want to sit in the seated area, they're not looking at the, the fire rescue boat canopy. They're able to see the, the lake and that's the direction. So being considerate of, of the intended use of that. But I think when you look at option one, you see a lot less hardscape and that was brought up in both the PRFC and Public Works Committee. But just also trying to be conscious that you want those, that sidewalk connection for ADA compliance and, and people to be able to sit on the viewable area. But that's kind of our, some of the pieces that were pointed out. And then also they had, the PRFC had recommended zoning this. Not it's zoned as right away or. So zoning this in a, a part as a park so that ordinance and rules such as hours of use could be applied to this area and just maintenance being under the purview of parks and rec department.
Much appreciated. Alder Schaefer?
Yeah, I'll say I, I like these both, but I like one first. When we were going over this when I was chair of Parks and Recreation, it was very clear from the people, they wanted to have a place to go look out onto the lake. And the placement of the pier on option one to me is much more comfortable for somebody getting out, coming down the street. You've got a wider expanse. It looks to the south. You see more lake. And I think from just a, a non boater's standpoint, it's a much preferred option. I guess my only question is of both designs, you have parallel sidewalks with a wall between them. And if you're talking about increasing space, see where number two is on, on the first one? I'm not sure you actually, why do you actually need a second? There's a inner sidewalk and then there's a second sidewalk that goes out to the pier. Why do you really need that inner sidewalk? Couldn't you just sort of make one larger sidewalk with an extension to the pier?
The, so the inner sidewalk is for that overlook and the grade change is about four. Yeah, elevation, it changes about four feet from the lake edge to that. So there, that would be to help service the overlook and then it'd be ADA access to the pier.
But certainly from the feedback I got when I was there, that option one fits much closer to what I think the people really wanted. I promote that one.
Thank you for that. Alder Nelson?
Last night at PRFC, we also talked about, if you can see the center circle with the two trees, just below the trees on that sidewalk right there, there was talk of eliminating that amount of concrete.
Yep, Sean had brought that up, but yes, that was on PRFC. And I feel like that's an area kind of all even up a little bit north of that. As long as you're keeping that sidewalk, how the direction that we will go back with upon any of your direction is additional direction is to get that green space as maximized as possible within the whole design, but that's an area we can definitely add.
Alder Cole?
So I have a question about the sidewalk, like where number three goes to number five. The drop off there to like the shore?
Yeah.
Is, is there a drop off or can you step smoothly from the sidewalk as it slopes down to that beach?
It'll be, it's all going to be ADA grade and then that number five is a gangway. So that will be attached to that concrete. And if the water level, if the water level ever changes, it does move with that a bit because of, with the dock. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a step is what MSA had, that was a question last night. So.
I guess not maybe, maybe not along from the sidewalk to the pier, but the sidewalk to the ground, like to.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or three to 10, like to the lawn, to the beachfront. Or gravel or whatever.
Well, then that, that's meant for, so it wouldn't be.
And I haven't seen a grading plan for this yet, but my understanding is this isn't going to be a step. So to the degree that little sidewalk stub will slope, so would, I think, numbers 10 and 11 there where there's sort of grass and beach to keep, well, at least as reasonably flush as we can, right? Sidewalk doesn't move, but grass does.
Alder Hennara?
Thanks. Two things. One, I wonder if 10 could be replaced with something like the the scenic overlook at Bezen Branch Conservancy to where you can see the eagles when they're there. Instead of having sidewalk and stairs going down, just something, some sort of viewing platform. And then I just wanted to make clear to everybody because this came up in the comments a while ago. The Pebble Beach is in no way intended to be a swimming beach. It is a craft launching beach.
Alder Wolkis?
Does this sidewalk connect to Middleton Beach Road to provide access to the park that's along there?
I don't know.
At least because in this drawing it does, but the other one it doesn't.
Or if the sidewalk, you can talk, Sean, but it.
Yeah, so that Middleton Beach Road project a couple of years ago stubbed a piece of sidewalk up to Lake Street.
Okay.
So this would connect with that. Yeah, now we don't have sidewalk along Middleton Beach Road, but at least the roads connected.
And we'd love more visitors. So it'll be great. I know at one point they were thinking about having a walking path through the trees. But that's not on this timeline and that might be one of the things you were remembering. So maybe in a future evolution. Any other comments? I think you have your keep on going from council, if that is all that you need. And I'm speaking for you all. Is there any?
I have one more question about process of this because of the committees it was originally moving through when it was referred to council. And it has not returned to those same committees, meaning like, when does it? Wasn't quite the same list of those that reviewed it before?
Yeah, if council wanted that input, I, to tell you, I've been dealing with this mostly as a road project because it's mostly a road project. And so Public Works Committee historically does all of that design. And it doesn't come back to council until bid award typically. But if, if council wants to refer it to a different committee for an issue, that'd be fine.
And I think there was something noted about the potential need for it to, because of the change in cost estimates, for it to be reviewed again by finance? I mean, at what point?
At some point, we're going to have to refine the cost estimate and then identify how to pay for it. Yeah. So I, in the Public Works Committee Minutes, just put some ideas out there, but we haven't identified that yet.
Alder Wolkis?
I want to just point out that I think the focus should be the fact that this is about the streets. I realize the park project is something that's been discussed, but I would hate to take from another street project to to facilitate this project at this point in time. I think one of our most biggest responsibilities as a city is to provide for the roads and infrastructure. So I would like to make sure that we make that a paramount decision.
Alder Hennara?
Just a question for Sean and Kylie. Is the, is the overage related to the street or to the park? And is the, is the Public Works Project the source of the park funding? Or can we use our park development fund for that?
I was wondering that. That's a great question.
Yeah, it's a little bit of both. And I know I had just some really rough breakouts in the packet for you. You know, so I think the park area was in the ballpark of $207,000. You know, I included that in sort of capital funding in when I figured out, I think we're about a half a million dollars under budgeted. So it, I'll say it's $300,000 for roads and $200,000 for end of road.
And Kylie, can you answer the question about a source of funds for park development?
Yes, it was something we, we had discussed for funding. And I haven't looked into or requested that from city attorney because we're still at this point in the design or just in preliminary design. So but it has been brought up of utilizing park development funds as a source for that. And because it's a change of use and but we'll have to check on that for sure. So.
Thank you.
I appreciate that question. And from my recall, we're supposed to use park development fees within a certain distance or is that an old rule?
It's, it's zoned as one zone. City of Middleton is one zone.
Fantastic. Maybe I just misrecalled that. So thank you. And so with that, I will just leave that this development giving people a destination, especially if they want to walk to it, bike to it, to watch sunrises, to watch sunsets, to have a communal area is a wonderful and beautiful thing. I do appreciate staff's time and all of the committee's time to design it. And at the same time, it is providing an opportunity for the things coming off the Allen Boulevard traffic corridor that currently goes straight into the lake. And that is not a pretty thing. So it's mitigating an environmental issue. But in doing so, it's absolutely beautiful. And I hope that we can continue to do very innovative projects like that into the future. So thank you. Up next is the request for tax increment financing. District number three assistance for Fristem Pumps USA.
This is Hennara. I move approval of the request for TIF financing. District three assistance for Fristem Pumps USA.
Do I have a second?
Laura Monroe, second.
Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the.
There is a.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Over there.
Alder Wolkis?
Thank you. I just wanted to go on record. I did vote against this when it was up at finance because I had a little bit of, of past councils ringing in my ear and that had been suggested that our policy be 80/20, not 90/10. Actually spoke with a few former council members and talked things over with them. And I came to my own decision that I, I think 90/10 is a good idea with this project because of the concessions that and the work that the, the planning department has done to sort of that their recommendation and the approval be lower than what they are asking. And the fact that this is not a developer, this is a business. They are staying in Middleton and hopefully we'll be able to create some jobs with this development. So I think that this, while it is a departure from the 80/20 that has been from prior councils a policy, I think that it is appropriate to move forward with this.
Much appreciate your comment. Any other comments? I'll look up this time. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of approving the TIF district number three assistance for Fristem Pumps USA, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Up next is the committee appointments. First is the appointment of Brandon Lang to Public Works Committee. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, Brandon Lang is a resident of District Six, so I'm happy to move approval.
Laura Monroe, second.
Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the appointment of Brandon Lang to the Public Works, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Appointment of Lynn Wilson to the Sustainability Committee.
I would move we approve on behalf of myself and a very eager sustainability committee that really likes this person. I move.
I will second because he too is a president of District Six and I am just as eager.
Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the appointment of Lynn Wilson to the Sustainability Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next up is discussion, including updates on committees, commissions, and boards from the mayor and council members. I, I know we had a robust discussion on what's going on in parks and public works. So Alder Schaefer?
We had Sustainability Committee last, yesterday. Very strong. Very good about we're moving forward with this whole process of a document to help guide city departments for purchasing to become sustainable. And, and what has been really good is we had a document, started revising it. And now members of the committee are meeting with individuals. I know they met with Kylie and Parks on a very good group discussion as to what they're doing, what they can doing. So we're kind of shifting this into a more proactive process where it won't be such a dictatorial document. It'll be a supportive kind of document. And we're progressively going to meet with all the department heads over time. And we're learning a lot, but it's moving forward very well. And I, I'm very encouraged that hopefully within three, a couple of months, we'll have a, a good document placed. A secondary, an issue of concern came up on the committee dealing with recharging stations. And we had some people are beginning to complain that people are preking recharging stations who are not recharging. And wondering what, if anything, the city, what authority the state, the city, anybody have? And wondering what, if anything, the city, what authority, the state, the city, anybody has to sort of enforce like you would with a handicap parking, who sits there in those spots? And it's, it's had at least three different people chime in that they've had examples of people, cars sitting there all day. Somebody actually by the library lot, they got there for months, was parking there all day and they had a talk and finally got to lose the car. So I didn't know. I said, I would raise this issue because I don't know what anything is there or what could be done.
No, it's, it's, it's an illegal parking issue and the police department can enforce it as it does other illegal parking.
Okay. Well, I can pass it on.
Can you refer that, can we, Brian, can you help me? Can we refer that issue from sustainability to public safety?
Yeah, I'd like to see it go somewhere because it was.
I mean, I don't necessarily, sorry, I, I don't know that it needs to go to a committee. I mean, it's more of a implementation of policy and state law. So I, you know, could just go as a item commentary.
More as an awareness, like if, if the chief starts working on it and have a member of sustainability talk.
Paying attention to it or they're not, you know, the police, whoever would be dealing with this sort of maybe not really engaging. So I think the committee would like to see somebody get a little more engaged with this.
I think that's great because when I was on public safety and I think Alder Cole, you're on it now. I think we would have enjoyed a, a topic from another committee. So I've changed up the agenda. So.
I certainly have noted it for our next meeting, just as a topic to chat about.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to mention the library board when we met. A, a couple of things. We had a report from Amy Perry, who's one of the librarians in charge of outreach and how much the library, some of the different things that, that she does and that the staff do to reach out to the community, to schools, to different events. She talked about an event that they did, a storytime at the, at the firehouse where the fire trucks had to go out during storytime. Firemen had to leave, which the kids thought was great, apparently. Watching that in action, but just how, how much that the library is involved in getting out into the community and working on getting our bookmobile coming this next year. A, a, a way to reach out even more in the community. So that's going on. Also, on February 4th, the Sunday, for Sunday in February, the library will be open.
So exciting.
So they are planning on having Sundays open starting on February 4th. One to five? I, I don't remember exactly, but afternoons. So, and that, and that will be, that will be every Sunday, yeah, through the summer or through spring and summer.
So maybe we can do a special social media post if you helped me remember, Brian?
Communications Director and Library Director are already working on it.
Yeah, I think they've been working on getting that out. So.
Great updates. So glad to hear, especially the, the firemen who were leaving during storytime. Alder Hanira?
I have one that just occurred to me and it's, it's from sustainability. But one of my neighbors approached me and said, she had a bone to pick with me because I had not put into my newsletter for December, a call for applications for the Sustainable Middleton Award. And you can still submit them through the end of January. And I promised her I would bring it up tonight and I would also put it in my January newsletter.
Can you send me a link?
Yep.
That'd be great.
In fact, that came up at the meeting and there was concern that a number of people hadn't received information about it. And a confusion as to who's on what list. And I said, well, I for one, as an older person, never got that on my list. So I don't. And so it's, it raised confusion about who's, who's on what list and some cleaning up needs to be done.
Maybe we can, yeah, Brian, we're assigning everything. Maybe we can do a social media post. I can work with Sean on that. But thank you, Alder Hanira, for bringing that up. So we make sure we get.
Communications Director and the Sustainability Coordinator are working on a post as well.
On fire, my friends. This is great.
The communications person.
Alder Jackson?
Just two brief announcements. I am so happy to say that we are moving forward on the mound situation. At our meeting, there are two grants that have been applied for to assess them and to get them cleaned up and get the signs that they need. So I was, so I was clapping about that. They actually asked me to reach out to HoChuck and ask them what, the HoChuck Nation, ask them what the ask is. And they're moving forward. Everybody on Landmark is excited about getting this mound thing taken care of.
That's exciting.
I am. I'm definitely happy about that. I don't know if any, many, any of you on social media also. We'll be having lunch at Paquitos on Thursday and Abby put it out to invite people out. Abby has invited staff members to have lunch at Paquitos, which is a beautiful place to eat. I definitely will be there. I marked it on my calendar. So if you guys want to come out to Paquitos on Thursday, I think it's 11:30, she says she posted on Facebook. I'm going to spend time with Abby and the staff and the crew. We're going to eat ceviche and all that other good stuff.
We, we might need to have an announcement, City Administrator Gatto, to ensure that walking quorum might be occurring and just a notification. That would be great. So I'm glad you reminded that we are following protocols and that landmarks thing is very, very cool. So keep talking to us and let us know because we'll come and celebrate with you all when that gets moving. Any other topics? None? I lost my spot. Yep.
Sorry, Madam Chair. Just a point of information for the body. You know, and we had talked about the possibility of canceling the January 2nd meeting. Unfortunately, we have some business that we do need to conclude in January. So we will need to meet on the second. There will be probably a number of items on the docket for the second, but one of the bigger items will be the first reading of the zoning ordinance update for your consideration, discussion, presentation, all that stuff. So unfortunately, there will be a meeting scheduled for the second. Yeah.
Confirmation that the committee of the whole is on the 14th?
Uh, it, the 12th. Yeah. So that, that committee, the whole meeting is on January 12th. Working on the agenda as we speak. So there'll be more information that goes out about that probably next week.
All afternoon, four hours?
Noon to four, yes.
Very good. Now I'm all caught up. I'm, I'm making sure. Everyone, I want to wish you a happy holidays. Thank you for the wonderful discussions tonight, especially on the lake edge. I'll get better at that. And with that, we are joined by Larry. I hope that you will.